Christmas Brown. All right, you want to get going here?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so in terms of a caucus, if we could simply assign who will be reading the items related A through F under new business. Chuck, do you want to do item A? Mayor, you want to do item B?
I can do that.
Steve, you want to do C?
Yeah.
I'm going to skip D. Right? John, you want to do F? John?
Duke.
F?
Do we have that?
Yeah.
Motion?
Might be extra motion.
Oh.
And then Chuck, you want to do D? Which we're going to move.
Now, Mark, let me just clarify one thing too now. We've moved this around a bit now. What is the motion for the appointments to boards? What is that, A or?
E.
E?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, then you have another one.
I thought we'd changed it around. Okay, okay, I got you. Thank you.
All right, so, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Am I reading D or F?
You're reading A and D. Okay. Mayor's reading B, Steve's reading C, Don's reading E, and John's reading F.
Can I switch with Don Dragish? We're probably read that in its entirety, the motion.
Yeah, that's fine.
So you take F and I'll do E.
I got you.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, so we call the meeting of City Council on January 3rd, 2014, to order at this time. Would you all rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united in the people, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Here.
At this time, I'd like to have someone make a motion pursuant to Section 2.04 of the Rules of Council to change the order of business and move new business item D up to this point in the meeting.
So, second?
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
All right. And Mr. Tisch, you're reading F.
I have a motion appointing an individual to President of Council. Are there any nominations for that position?
I would make a nomination, Steve Rogers, be President of Council. I will second that.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Are there any other nominations? Having heard none?
I'll go ahead and proceed. As of that time.
Please call or roll with regard to the motion on the floor.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Stand.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion that passed by a four to zero vote. So, Mr. Rogers, as President of Council, I ask that you pick up from here. Item four, approval of minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Law Director. I would like to mention that you've all gotten the two minutes from December 18th. Are there any revisions or corrections of the minutes as they have been provided to you?
I have.
If not, they stand approved. Read of Communications. Let's start with Ms. Mayor. Do you have anything you want to read thus far, any communications that you've gotten this past week, communications wise? Any communications that you've gotten this week you want to?
I haven't yet, I have not received any communications thus far.
Mr. Morvay?
Just in general, a couple citizens were very pleased with the snow removal. Again, it was actually good things said about how things were addressed during the snowstorm. So, that was a positive thing as well.
Mr. Tisch?
I had no comments, citizens.
Mr. Dragish?
No comments to that.
Okay, good. Thank you, very good. Okay. How about, let's move on to Joe now. Joe, you want to speak in this?
I have one item of communication. I've received a notice from the Mahoney County Commissioners of an annexation hearing to take place on February 4th at 11:00 a.m. in the Canfield Township Administration Building. And this is in reference to the 18 acres on the west side of 446, just east of Lisbon Road. And I do find I'm attending that here. That's fully out.
And I have no communication, Mr. Rogers.
Any questions for Mr. Ruino this evening? Mark, do you have that to all season?
I do not.
Okay.
Joe, the project is suspended now until further notice of the project.
Forty-six, yes. Everything's completed. Have you noticed the lighting is on, on both the east and west side of the street? That's been completed in its entirety. And the only thing left to do at this point would be the finalization, the connection of the curving there, and the second top coat of asphalt and the sidewalks. So, it's pretty well on its way to completion. That will happen, obviously, when weather permits.
Very good, thank you, Joe. Under item seven, there is no persons that are here requesting to appear before council. Under old business, there is none. New business, as per provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield. Sorry.
We missed Reports Committee's Board of City Manager.
Well, being they're all, okay, I was thinking nobody's board yet, you're right to also. Reports from all the committees, I'm sorry for that, too also. Being that Mr. Tisch, Mr. Dragish, and the mayor have not been on yet too. Mr. Morvay, do you have a report from your committee?
Yeah, just.
I'm sorry for that, too.
No, that's okay. I just want to update you on the fire board, the fire district. Last year, 2013, calls, emergency calls were up 5.3 percent. And so, that is an increase, is over about 100 and some calls from last year. Obviously, not a lot of fire calls, but a lot of emergency calls. And one of the things that we're going to be experiencing in Canfield is growth. You see it on the outskirts, the big building going up on Summit, and other development going on. And I suspect that these calls are just going to keep increasing, you know? So, the fire district is busy. With that, we had a situation last year where we identified that we need more water, we need more water pressure. And so, they're now proposing that we put a water tower somewhere up around the Kensington Development. Hasn't been identified yet where, how, or what, when. But we did get a grant awarded to us for $750,000 from Mahoney County to pursue that project. There's other work to be done, but we're moving forward in that direction, so.
Two.
Couple of questions? If I may? Wasn't there at one time the location chosen, was it the end of Summit Drive, that water tank? And weren't you working on that, Joe, when you were?
Right, there was a commitment from the developer who had backed out of his commitment, basically, that happened. That's why they ended up not having a site. He, what he had, that he had sold off a portion of the site that he had committed to the county at the time, and wasn't enough property left there to construct the tank, so.
Have they done anything with regard to the design of that tank, as far as elevation size, or any of that kind of thing?
Yeah, there certainly will be some differences as far as the height, based on where the new, I'm not even sure where the new site is myself, but it'll have to accommodate.
Okay. Second question. You indicated percentages of increase. Do you have any idea what the actual numbers were of fire calls in the MSO?
No, not really. No, I don't have that report with me.
I have a question on this new water facility. It seems to me that you have enough elevation from the present town that we had on Talzman or close to Talzman.
This is a separate system. This is, this would be a county system. It would, the flow that comes from Aqua currently flows through a pump station at the corner of Tippecanoe and Western Reserve. And by building this elevated tank there, they'll be able to store water and not necessitate the pump station. But it's a county project, a county system, understood, separate from our system.
Okay. My committee has not met yet. We meet two weeks, too, so it's a design review, so I'll be prepared for you at that time anyway. Mr. Ruino, you want to report to us?
Yes, we have five items of legislation to deal with this evening. The first being an ordinance authorizing the city manager to submit applications and to execute contracts and to act as the chief executive officer and project manager for the Ohio Public Works Commission. Program year 2014, Ohio Public Works Commission funded project, namely the Fairview Drive Stormwater Management Project, and to designate the finance director as chief fiscal officer for all grant documents for the project. As I have reported at the last meeting, we submitted the project originally as a loan grant combination. We were unsuccessful, or I'm sorry, as a grant, local share project. We were unsuccessful in getting that. There was an abundance of over a million dollars of loan money available that was unclaimed, basically, for lack of a better word. We had made the request that we switch our project to 100% loan at zero interest. The committee did approve that, so we are able to accept that project through this action as a loan, again, for 0% interest. I believe it's over 20 years of clear payback period, so it's definitely worth pursuing, but the problems we've had out in that area, we can complete that project. The action here would be to finalize the applications and get them back to Eastgate, which are due Monday, so I appreciate passage of that this evening. The second item is authorizing the city manager to enter into contract with Tetra Tech. And basically, this is a follow-up piece that would allow us to start the engineering for the project. Even though the monies will not be released until July 1st of '14 for construction and engineering, we can front those dollars and then get reimbursed once they do become available. The advantage of starting now is that we can have plans ready to go prior to July 1st. We can go as far as bidding those, but we can't make the award until July 1st, and hopefully we can get that project done within the construction year. It's very difficult, you know, this project, this program has been on for, I think this is the 24th year. And why they picked the middle of the construction season to award projects, and Chuck can appreciate that, it's the only downfall, because communities have all spring just sitting there with the engines running, waiting for construction to start, but obviously, they work on a fiscal year, and they can't release the money until it's available, so. It's a program, we have the timeline we have to live with, and the better we are prepared and get all the bidding and everything out of the way, July 1st, as soon as they release the dollars, we can have a contractor out on site, so I'd like to pursue that.
You're indicating that this needs to be submitted rather quickly?
Yes.
Do we need to add this, or make this an emergency then?
No, because the actual acceptance of the documents won't take place until March, when OPWC formally acts on it. At this point, it's only the local committee that's submitting the projects, and we're good. We don't have to have the emergency legislation completed at this time.
So, this can be first reading.
And the third one would be a resolution designating services available for lands proposed for annexation, and this is what was referenced earlier of the meeting next week. The city needs to pass a resolution authorizing that they will provide services if the property is annexed within to the city, and I believe we're prepared to do so. A motion appointing a member, I'm sorry, a motion making appointments to boards and committees. We've had some discussion on that, and I believe we're ready to act on those various boards and committees, some of which will be starting as early as next week. See that completed this evening. And lastly, I've asked that we add one motion, and this is a motion, a correction motion for, one of those passed on November 6th, whereas when I made the calculations for the adjustment of the water bill, I didn't include the second meter. There was some low flow on the second meter, which changed the two figures for the first period. It was $2.12, and for the second period, it was $29.32. But however, in order to balance the records with the accounting of the usage, we have to have the accurate amounts in there, so I'm just asking that we correct that previous motion and get that behind us. Basically, that's all I have.
Any other questions for Mr. Ruino this evening? Mr. Fortuna?
Just a brief report about the annexation. We're required, under the Ohio Revised Code, once we receive a notice that a meeting is being held by the county commissioners relative to the annexation, we're required at that point to designate what services we will provide to the annexed territory and submit that to the commissioners by the 20 days, 20 days prior to the meeting. And I've already discussed that, Pat, and she's good to go with that. And in essence, it's for the county commissioners, part of their consideration in terms of approving an annexation, is will the annexed territory be, have services available to, like the rest of the community to which it's being annexed? And you'll see in that legislation tonight that that's what we're stating. And in terms of the required date for providing the services, we've indicated in the resolution that it will be, the services will be provided upon the annexation. So, it's pretty standard, so what we've done, it complies with the Ohio Revised Code, Section 70903, and we need to take that action, one way or the other, tonight. Other than that, I'll take any questions you have, but I don't have formal reports.
Okay. Thank you, Mark, I appreciate it, too, also. All right, let's move down to item A now. We skipped from before, too. So, as per the provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense the requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance, and I authorize adoption of the same upon its first read. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Second, Mr. Morvay, any discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Okay. And as per the provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to council dispense the requirement of a full reading of the proposed ordinance, and authorized by title only. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Second by Mr. Dragish. Discussion? Mr. Tisch, you have discussion? I'm sorry. It's okay. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
I have an ordinance authorizing the city manager to submit applications to execute contracts and to act as chief executive officer and project manager for the Ohio Public Works Commission. Project year 2014, OPWC funded project, namely the Fairview Drive Stormwater Management Project, and to designate the finance director as chief fiscal officer for all grant documents for the project. I move for passage.
Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Morvay? Thank you. Any discussion on this? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Very good. Push to passes. Before we go further in this one, too, did you mention this first reading?
No, you just dispatched for the two readings.
No, it's, okay, all right, okay.
The number?
Chuck, you mentioned that this is on the first reading you mentioned, too, that's why I picked that up and roll.
Didn't we just pass a motion to pass it with one reading?
Yes, I said you dispatched for the two readings.
Okay.
Mr. Counsel, Chairman, the number, please?
Okay, number, please?
2014 dash one.
First one, very good. Okay, number two, B. As per provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense the requirement of two readings, interposed ordinance, and authorize adoption same upon its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Morvay, discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
As per provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to council dispense the requirement of full reading of the proposed ordinance authorized by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Tisch, discussion? There being none, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Very good. Mayor Cozart.
Ordinance B under new business. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contact with Terra Tech Inc. Consultants for Basic Engineering Services for the new Fairway Drive Stormwater Management Project.
Okay, do you have a second? Second, Mr. Dragish?
Move for pass.
Okay, well, I caught you, you're okay. Second, Mr. Dragish, okay. Clerk, I'm sorry, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Okay. Number C is a resolution, too, also. As per the provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense the requirement of two readings of the proposed resolution, and authorized by adoption same upon its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Tisch, discussion? There being none, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Just a point of order. We need to sign the number to ordinance new business B. If you could ask for that, please.
This is two. Second one is two, 114 dash two.
2014 dash two.
Okay, thank you, clerk, I'm getting this yet. Thank you for your patience. That's 114 dash two, the last one is dead four, the ordinance to see. We're two. Okay? Okay. Where we leave off, I'm sorry.
You dispatched two readings on item C. We're approaching the roll call, I believe.
Roll call, yes, roll call, Pat.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
All right, that was mine, correct? I have a resolution designating the services available of two lands proposed for annexation to the city. I move for passage of this resolution. Do I have a second?
We need, you need to make a motion to dispense with full reading.
Title on.
Okay, that was a motion, okay. Okay, I ask provisions of Section 4.05, the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense the requirement of two readings of the proposed resolution, and authorize by adoption same upon its first reading. Do I have a second on that?
No, no, this is titled on, Steve.
I apologize, folks. As per provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to council dispense the requirement of full reading of proposed resolution, and authorized by title only. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Morvay. Any discussion on that? There being none, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
All right, now I'm going to read.
The president needs to do the resolution, he wants to read the title.
Well, you need a number on that resolution.
Yes, well, I haven't seen.
Resilience.
Okay, I've read it yet. Number, please?
I think you need to read the.
You need the resolution by title.
I've not read the resolution yet.
That's what I said, I've not read it yet. Again, pardon me, Chuck, it's nuts, you're listening to me. Okay. I have a resolution designing the services available of lands proposed for annexation to the city. Now I move, now I ask for a second for that.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Okay. Now, motion D is a permission to boards, correct?
We need it.
Make sure we're, no, I gotta make sure we're ordering that, too. Yeah, number, please, two first, number, please, Pat.
Resolution?
Yes.
2014 dash one.
Thank you very much.
You're on new business E.
E. All right, this is the.
Mr. President, I have a motion making appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Whereas the terms of several individuals serving on boards, commissions, and committees expire December 31st, 2013, and whereas city council is empowered by the charter to appoint members to set boards, commissions, and committees, and whereas council desires to make these appointments, now therefore, it is hereby moved by the council of the City of Canfield, Ohio. Section one, the following individuals are hereby appointed to fill the positions on designated board, commissions, committee, the term as indicated. Lou Zarlinga, Planning and Zoning Commission, term will expire 12/31/2016. Rachel McCartney, Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire 12/31/2016. Don Dragish, Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire 12/31/2016. Eric Axelson, Design Review Historical Preservation Committee, will expire 12/31/2016. Robert Palma, Civil Service Commission, term to expire 12/31/2016. John Craig, Park Recreation Cemetery Board, term to expire 12/31/2016. J.T. Whitehouse, Park Recreation Cemetery Board, term to expire 12/31/2016. Judy C's Income Tax Review Board, term to expire 12/31/2016. Andrew Scabola, Income Tax Review Board, term to expire 12/31/2016. John Morvay, Cardinal Joint Fire District, term to expire 12/31/2014. And Michael Clayton, Cardinal Joint Fire District, term to expire 12/31/2014. Section two, that this motion, all deliberations relating to the passage of this motion were held in open meetings of council, all pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code and Section 3.11 of the charters of the municipality of Canfield. And I move for passage.
Thank you, John, do I have a second? Any discussion? Second by Mr. Dragish. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I guess I have a comment.
Um, yeah, I guess I had a comment.
Gotcha.
Um, in the discussion that I think that I'd had with maybe Mr. Rogers, I thought that we had an individual rotated between those two, not that it makes any difference to me, one way or the other, but it seemed to me that we had an individual who got designated in design, we were having some discussion about them being on planning and vice versa, that if everybody understands that.
Yeah. But I think it was Mr. Axelson that we thought would be better served in design review than historical preservation.
And I can speak up, yeah, Chuck, I did, I did see, I did see Eric today, and he definitely was all for that, he won, so he was all excited about that.
Is there a reason for the question?
Chuck, thank you for your, thank you for coming to us also. Okay, clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Kozar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Okay, clerk, and the, and number please?
2014 dash one.
Okay. The last one we had this evening is item D, correct?
And you just have to do title only, Mr. Tisch.
Title, I know.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Shouldn't this motion be two?
We're just discussing, that's two.
Okay. The first one was appointing you as president of council.
That's right.
So this should be.
This is by title only too also. Okay. As per provisions of Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Campfield, I move to counsel dispense with the requirement of the full reading of the proposed motion and authorize by reading by title only. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Moravec. Any discussion? Clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Kozar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Okay, now, who is going to read that? Was that?
Dawn.
Dawn, go ahead.
F, motion, a motion to waive a portion of utility charges upon inspection of property.
Okay.
Motion for passage. Move for passage.
Very good. Any second on that?
Second.
Mr. Moravec? Any discussion on that? Clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Kozar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
All right, and the number please?
I have a point of order on that, for the new members of council. Only council has the authority within the city to either waive a penalty, waive a fee, refund a charge or collection, or a bill. So, planning, design, none of the departments within the city have that authority. So while these things may seem either minute or somewhat trivial, you're the only body within the city that has the authority to do that.
I think it's a matter of information, and also that this motion was originally presented and passed by previous members of council, and as Mr. Ruino indicated, this is really a correction of that motion.
Very good. Also, Mr. Tisch, thank you so much. Okay. Takes care of that. Is there, is there any more? Pat.
Number two.
Yes, number, number, number please.
2014 dash three.
Pat, what we do without you, Pat, and keep me in line tonight too also, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Under councilman's comments tonight, we'll start with the new mayor. Mayor, would you like to say a few words tonight?
I'm excited to be here. I couldn't wait. I've been to Baylor for eight and a half years, working that side of the bench, hoping to soon get qualified on the 16th or 17th Columbus and more side of the bench. This pays a little bit more than that side. Second thing I'd like to share with the group, it does my heart good to say the Pledge of Allegiance and see Frank snap two. I think you shared with us in your comments in one of the four meetings that I attended to, November the 1st of 2008, there was a federal law passed which said that veterans out of uniform, or military people out of uniform or veterans, are authorized to salute the flag when it goes by, the Pledge of Allegiance, the Star-Spangled Banner. And I, for one, when I was an auxiliary cop, used to get goosebumps every time I snapped two at the Fourth of July parade, and I still am, so Frank, I'm going to join you henceforth. And my thumb will not be sticking out even be sharp. Yours is sticking out a little bit.
I'll check.
That's all I have. Mr. Moravec.
Yeah, so, just, first of all, I just want to welcome the new members here, mayor, council members, and thank you for serving again, thank you for putting forth and serving. I just have some goals that I've written down that perhaps, you know, I'm going to try to achieve this year, and so then, maybe at the end of the year, I can recap and tell you what we've done and what we didn't do, so. Number one, I continue to look toward the future in terms of what technology or ideas that will allow Campfield to grow and perhaps help us retain our young people here in town. And that's what it's going to take. It's going to take technology and growth to do that. Second, to communicate, and these aren't in any kind of an order, just, just random, but to communicate and collaborate with the township, to explore perhaps economies of scale or scope. I mean, what can we do as a group together better and maybe perhaps do it better, so. Number three, complete North Broad Street Phase Two and secure funds for perhaps Phase Three. Number four, to work within a new charter amendments and identify citizens that will serve on various community committees and commissions for the future of this city. I think, you know, this is what we have to do now, is to get more people involved, and perhaps this is a good thing. We'll see, you know. But in order to do that, we have to identify good people and get them wanting to serve, so. And we, we all need to do that. And then fourth and last, be a dedicated councilman and take every idea, complaint, or problem, explore solutions that will be beneficial to all concerned. And so with that, I just have a quote, "The secret, the secret of getting ahead is getting started. The secret to getting started is breaking your complex overwhelming tasks into small, manageable tasks, and then starting on the first one." And that was written by Mark Clayton, and that's what we have to do, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moravec. Mr. Tisch?
I'd like to wish everybody a happy new year. I'd also like to make a suggestion to our administrative staff that with the incoming of the new regulations with regard to speaking at the committee meetings, that maybe the city attorney would attend the first meeting of each of those committees, just with the idea of making sure that the chairs of those committees understand how that can work out in an efficient manner and handle those situations, and so we can be productive in those areas. I'd like to thank all of you that are in attendance, all of you. I don't know that the numbers have grown much from when I was here at that side of the table, but at any rate, I'd like to thank you all for being here, and again, I wish everybody a happy new year. Look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisch, Mr. Dragish.